The meeting of North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And begin with a moment of silence for the following. Robert Ross, a graduate of North Syracuse Central School District. William Daniel Campell, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Piree of the North Syracuse Central. Okay, we're going to begin with a recognition. Awesome. Current sit up happened not too long ago, so I'm going to read this. On May tenth, two thousand twenty-four, Christopher Tucci, a member of North Syracuse Central School District, driver of bus six eighty-one, demonstrated exceptional vigilance and care while driving through Matida without students on board. Driver noticed a toddler approximately two to three years old wandering alone without shoes, wearing only a diaper and a T-shirt. Acting swiftly, the driver stopped the bus and contacted nine one one, remaining with the child until the police arrived. There were no adults, parents, or guardians present at the scene. Thanks to Mr. Tucci's prompt actions, the child was safely reunited with their parent, who was unaware that the toddler had left the home. We commend the driver for their quick thinking and dedication to the safety of our community.
Mr. Tucci, on behalf of the North Syracuse Board of Education and myself and Mr. Farfalia, we want to say thank you. And recognize you with a certificate. And it was when we got the news, it was just very impressive.
Thank you.
And you're definitely the kind of driver that we want to see transporting all of our students. And we thank you so much, and I hope the parents thank you as well.
Thank you.
Because that was just an amazing, amazing thing that you did.
Thank you.
Okay, we have athletics presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Benardsky. Over here for you.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to highlight the outstanding year we've had. Yet, we're still going. This weekend, we are hosting the New York State Track Meet. We have ten CNS athletes that will be competing in it, as well as our girls varsity lacrosse is in the New York State Final Four, and they will be playing Suffolk Friday at one at SUNY Cortland. Tonight, we're going to do a quick recap of the season. I have a little video. But first, I'd like to thank the coaches, athletes, the custodial staff, everybody that helped with their flexibility this year with the renovation at the high school. So, thank you. So, right now, we'll turn it over to the recap of the twenty-three, twenty-four season. We've expanded our horizon with the addition of new teams and programs, embracing diversity and inclusion every step of the way. This year, we've welcomed new faces onto the field, court, and mat. With unified bowling, girls wrestling, and flag football, we're breaking barriers and embracing every challenge with open arms. But it's not just our teams that are getting a makeover. We're investing in state-of-the-art facilities, including a new pool, gym, locker rooms, tennis courts, weight room, to match the dedication and passion of our athletes. And speaking of passion and dedication, we can't forget to mention the voice of the North Stars, Darryl White, whose unwavering commitment brings every game to life. His love for the game, combined with his distinct voice, has become a staple within our community and Central New York. Our teams all strive to be the best, and hoping at the end they uphold the Section Three or New York State banner. This year, we were fortunate to have eight sectional titles. In the fall, boys volleyball and girls soccer. In the winter, boys bowling, cheerleading, boys wrestling, and girls indoor track. This spring, we had girls outdoor track and girls varsity lacrosse. Our vision for the future goes beyond wins and losses. We're shaping leaders for tomorrow, instilling values of resilience and character, and striving for excellence with integrity. Our athletic departments work with Excellence with Integrity Institute. We'll continue to provide a solid foundation for all our athletes, coaches, and spectators. We will continue to reach for the stars and live the North Star way. So, that was this year. So, where are we headed? So, as it said in the video, the athletic department has teamed up with Excellence with Integrity Institute, which is a not-for-profit organization dedicated to enhance culture, leadership, character, and performance. We've been working with the president, Matt Davidson, and Excellence with Integrity Institute has worked with many universities and companies across the country. Some locally are Syracuse University, LeMoyne, well, Stanford, the University of Denver. So, our committee, it consists of teachers slash coaches, principal, officials, announcer, Darryl, which you saw in the video, and a few community members of about twenty. So, what this work is. The importance of this work is developing a positive culture, whether it be in the stands, in the hallways, on the field, off the field, in the community. Developing that culture and the expectations of how a North Star athlete, coach, and spectator should conduct themselves. So, this is the draft that we have so far. This is a work in progress, but if you'll look, our vision is developing excellence, integrity, unity, resilience, leadership through athletics as preparation for life. Our five guiding values are excellence, integrity, unity, resilience, and leadership. And our motto will be to uphold that by living it the North Star way. Now, going into the next part is the North Star, the commitments. So, for example, to commit to excellence, and I'll just go through one of them. Valuing the growth process and journey as much as a lofty goals we seek to achieve. Act with integrity, owning it, making things right when we fail, make mistakes or fall short of our guiding values. Unity, developing pride and unity in our school, our community, by how we compete and conduct ourselves. Persevere in resilience, supporting one another, each reaching out when needed, and finding hope in our ability to hold fast and emerge stronger from our hardships. And the last one, lead the way, competing in a way that respects the game and our teammates, opponents, coaches, officials, and spectators. And that's what we're trying to get to, is living the North Star way. Any questions on that before I move on?
First of all, I love this. Thank you so much, and thank you to everybody who helped chip in to draft this. With this, how would this be used with our athletes? Would it be maybe given out at like a tryout? Would the players have to sign it before even joining the team? Like, I think there's a lot of things, a lot of ways this could be used, and I was just curious on the plans for that.
Yep, and so in the fall, we're going to start the rollout, and that starts with the coaches and getting them on board. I mean, obviously, some are involved, but there are some that aren't yet. And then, meeting with the players. I'm bringing, I'm going to bring back the captain's glove that kind of fell short during COVID. So, I'm going to bring that back and use those students to help deliver this message as well. And then, there's the parent group, which will follow. So, this is going to be a work in progress over the next year or so. Yeah. Okay, this, the last thing I have is, as mentioned in the video, you saw a individual that I'd like to recognize here tonight. He's the man behind the scenes that makes it all happen, and I call it the show because it is a show. He thinks he's here for the Excellence with Integrity because he is a member. But whether it's introductions, the music, flashing lights after a goal or touchdown, that is all Darryl White. And I've been fortunate to go to many high school athletic facilities across New York State, and there is no voice like the voice of the North Stars. Darryl works for Davis Ulmer, and he takes, you know, personal time off that, off his work to be here, whether it be for an early game, senior night, Special Olympics. He's committed and a huge part of this athletic department. So, Darryl, tonight, I'd like to thank you for not only your hard work and dedication over the years, but your friendship. I'd like to, I'm honored to work with you here at North Syracuse Central School District, and I'd like to present you a certificate of appreciation for that. Thank you.
I just wanted to also congratulate all of the eight sectional champion teams. And that says a lot about the students themselves, student athletes, the teachers, the staff, you know, the trainers, everybody who's going into that. It's a lot of work, and it's not easy to pull off eight sectional championships in a year. And there's some diversity in the sports, too, so we're really exceeding all over the place. And I know there's a few teams that did really well that were close and didn't make it. So, there's a lot of good things in our athletic department to be proud of, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Hey, at this portion, we're at the comments, comment section of the board agenda where the public's allowed to comment. We set aside some time for that. Today, we have one speaker, and just to recap our rules very quickly, we allow three minutes per speaker, so there'll be three minutes. Our board clerk will run a timer, but these three minutes are for you to tell us what you believe. Donafrio, when you're ready. I know you've done this before. Okay. I think once.
No, I think I have, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, I have. That's correct.
All right, good evening. My name is Michael Donafrio. First, I'll start by congratulating all our newly re-elected board members and also on the passing of the budget. So, congratulations. What brings me here today, my journey starts, I'll start by saying my son graduates from high school this year. But what brought me here today started back when he was in kindergarten, and it was kindergarten open house. And I remember learning that day as we spoke to the then-principal of Allen Road Elementary that my daughter, who was no longer not school age yet, would go there for kindergarten. But once she got to first grade, she would then be going to Bear Road Elementary. I should state, my daughter does have a diagnosed disability, and those students would not be attending her homeschool. She would end up at Bear Road. Now, I was told then that she would love it there, it'd be a great program. But that one moment is what really got me seated at this table today. From that moment on, we knew that there was no way that my daughter was not going to do anything but to attend the school that she should have gone to, which was Allen Road Elementary. So, that was the fall. By the spring of that year, I had been elected to the Board of Education. One thing people should know about parents of students with disabilities. The one thing that everybody knows as a parent is that the hardest thing you'll deal with with your child isn't their physical disability, it's not financial, it's not even surgery, it's education. Education is the one hurdle that parents will face when you are a parent of a child with a disability. It's the biggest struggle. Everyone knows it, everyone's taught it, everyone lives it. So, what happened next after I was on the Board of Education? The one thing we did was we strive to work towards getting students all into their homeschool, also to have them in general education classrooms, and to work towards not having self-contained classrooms, fifteen-to-one, twelve-to-one. Also, changing culturally the way that we discuss students with disabilities or their classes. It wasn't blended, they were included. The word blended really disappeared. It disappeared from doorways, literature, conversations, it was sort of a big deal. How did we do this? Lots of ways. At the time, we had plenty of guest speakers come in that were specialty, their specialty was inclusion in the classroom. People like Julie Costin, George Steel Harris, people that, who know those in that industry. They were professors at Syracuse University, they helped, they came in, they helped to create the plan to put students not only in their homeschool, but also to allocate resources appropriately to educate students in a general education setting at natural proportions. Some would say, what are natural proportions? Natural proportions are the proportion at which those with a disability are in relation to those without. So, for this conversation, we'll say ten percent. So, at that point in time, the goal was to have no more than ten percent of students with disabilities in a general education classroom.
Unless the board tells me otherwise, since you're the only one, I really want you to be able to finish.
Yeah.
Typically, we don't.
I'm not going to tell the whole story, you know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, those were some of the things that we did, and there was a lot of planning and work that went towards this. But I can say successfully that by the time my daughter was in first grade, she went to her homeschool, as did all the students that were going at that point in time. Since then, what do I know? Now, certainly, I don't know everything about what's changed, but I do know some of the stuff. I'm aware that students are not all at natural proportions in their, in their classrooms. There are more fifteen-to-one and twelve-to-one classrooms in places, specifically in Bear Road, that are in a BOSI's program that didn't exist before. And just as an FYI, in case we want to mask fifteen-to-one or twelve-to-one by any other term, it is a self-contained classroom. We can call it something else, but that's really what it is by design, okay? The other thing that was very surprising to me, the term blended. Blended actually used by the Director of Special Education in a CSE meeting, which means is a cultural shift. That means if the director uses the term blended, who else uses blended? And that's not the term that we were using back when I recall, the way things were here. So, what do I propose? Not just to sit here and tell you my story, but also that I think there's a way we can go back to those things that we were doing not that long ago. The framework was there, the design was there, the way it was done was there. And I would like to think with the assistance of the administration and the Board of Education, we can help to enact some of those things that already existed. We're not reinventing the wheel, they were already in place. So, I can come back here on a weekly, or not weekly, every meeting and tell a new story about special education, but I don't think that's the best use of any of our time. So, I'd like to hope that from here forward, we can work together to hopefully put some of those pieces in place to get back to where things were headed probably six or seven years ago.
Have any notes you can send or leave with the clerk for us to take a look at? We'd appreciate it.
Certainly, I don't have any with me now, but I can certainly furnish you with that.
Think it would help us to get more of the story.
Anything I can help to provide, to help to, I know, you know. But that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
If, I'm going to ask if we have any Board of Education Committee reports, starting with Mr. Corn and Policy.
Thank you, Paul. At the moment, we are still waiting for our second draft from year one BOSI's policy manual. Until we have that in place, we don't have anything scheduled at this time.
Mr. Crabtree, Paul's what you're doing for us Wednesday.
Well.
Okay, no. Special meeting legislated.
Regular, but a little special, different place. This Wednesday, June fifth, at four o'clock. I always challenged the district to have more people vote, and for the last three years, it's gone up. And so, we will celebrate not only the approval of all the propositions in the budget on Wednesday. And thank goodness, because I would have had to make the pizza if we didn't, so there's, that's that.
Right, thank you. Lieutenant Bowles?
Thank you. On Saturday, June first, at Jamesville Beach Park, six middle school teams, three from Gillette, three from Rocksmiddle competed in the CNY Rocket Team Challenge. The Rockin' Rockets team from Gillette placed fourth in the junior level. Just some background information, this team challenge is an annual competition in model rocketry for junior level grades four through eight and senior level grades nine through twelve. Teams with a minimum of four students and a maximum of eight can register for the competition. And again, we sent multiple teams there, and I think a good time was had by all. Steve Bacon and Colleen O'Connor really did a wonderful job with their students and look for more to come in the future. I think Tim mentioned many of our athletic teams performed recently, and we've had between our girls softball ended up losing to Liverpool in the sectional final, just barely eight to seven. We've had our baseball team, our new coach, Steve Bailey, took the team, they were fifteen and seven this year. So, the baseball team really was doing well. New York State meet also at the high school is scheduled for this Friday on the seventh and eighth, divisions one and two. We have some young ladies, Anna Els, stretched for a win in the long jump with seventeen feet, eleven inches. Aleah McDonald hurdled to a win in the four hundred with a one oh eight, two five, and Jaden Mackey grabbed a victory in the two hundred meters. In golf, our girls golf, we have some wonderful young ladies that traveled to Herkimer to play for the first time in the competition to represent Section Three in the state tournament. But Isabella Bort tied for fourth with an eighty-eight, and Chloe Tyce tied for seventh with a ninety-two, and will compete in the state championship this weekend at Edison Golf Club in Redford, Albany. And also, Aubrey Panto finished fortieth in the section, and Abby Hildreth came in forty-first. So, we have a lot of things happening with our teams, and as you can see from Mr. Benardsky's presentation, our goal is for our athletes, our coaches, and our parents to come away with some skills where they are a sportsmanship, there's pride. I want to make sure that when our student athletes compete, there's respect, and that people come away from participating against North Syracuse that they feel that the experience was a positive one, and we're trying to promote that in everything that we do. I will add.
Board of Education members, comments from?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight one of our huge accomplishments from a junior, Brandon Lowe. He recently competed on Britain's Got Talent over the pond, and he helped the main act get through to the semifinals. And it's not athletics per se, but it's something he's been invested in for as long as I can remember. He goes by Pogo Brandon, and it's something that I think us as a district should be hugely proud of, sending somebody across the pond as a junior to go compete on Britain's Got Talent, and not only compete, but help his teammates advance to semifinals. That family is crazy talented, I wish I had their genes. Hannah Williams did theater her whole career, and Ashley Williams did theater her whole career, and now he's competing on Britain's Got Talent. So, whatever water they're drinking, I would like some because that's just amazing, and I just want to highlight Brandon Lowe. So, congratulations to Brandon, and I wish you well.
Well, I want to go back to OC on BOSI's.
Was it on?
Oh, yeah, we're on this, this month, but that's fine. Lot of things happening. I have given you a slip of graduations. There's a total of six graduations, but three of them include North Syracuse kids. Recently, there was the Tools for Success Awards. These go to young men and women, especially in automobile and other programs. And I asked John Rice to attend, since he's the CTE director, and he did. One of our students, Joseph Kozlebowski, won the Culinary and Pastry Art Award. This is, and he won a thousand dollars. This is award given from one of our teachers, Mary Chapel, who unfortunately lost her son in a tragic, if you remember, very tragic. At UNOS about three years ago, she lost her son, who was a chef. And so, she gives a scholarship every year, one thousand, and our student won it. And I will be thanking Nancy for that. I thought that was great. So, there's my BOSI's things. North Syracuse, I have, I wish Tim stayed, because I do have some concerns that in the amount of coaches. We know that we had a wrestling coach come to us and say we need another wrestling coach for the girls. And so, I hope that is in the budget or is looked to in the budget. But I've come to also understand that our united, united team, our special needs kids, has grown so much that they need another coach. So, I hope that the athletic department and the administration look to these two programs, which have really gone forward. You know, if we have two coaches for boys varsity wrestling, we need to have two for the girls, too. So, that's, that's the way I feel about that. I'm concerned about some things on the agenda tonight, and one of them happens to be that we're looking at dismissing some people, which I understood, except I didn't realize that we were going to lose a French teacher. Case that says on the budget. that we were going to lose a French teacher based, it says, on the budget, and also because in enrollment. We were told by, we were asked, Josh asked a question to our business manager that nobody would be losing their job tonight because of this budget. Well, we are losing a French teacher tonight, if you look at it, so I'm, I'm really not pleased with, you know, pleased with that. The other thing is, we will be voting on, in my thing somewhere, changing clubs at the high school. We have not had in this high school, and I've done research, we do not have a student government at the high school. Principal's cabinet, Mr. Bowles, is not student government. These students tell me they have this program at the junior high, and then they go to the high school, and there's no student government. In this time of, of our country, it's important to have a student government, and the state stepping in, that's why you're changing the name, because the state has come in, and the commissioner said you have to have a student government at your high school. So I'm glad, it's about time that these students get input. So those are just some concerns that I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Good member is not present today.
No, Thomas isn't here, but last week was the CNS High School Awards, and Thomas won several, including the Presidential Scholar Awards, so just wanted to congratulate him and all the other kids that got to work last week.
Okay, we'll go on to routine action items, and I'll look for a motion for consideration or approval of the minutes of the May 13th meeting of the board. Pardon, sec from Dr. Kramer, any discussion? Being done, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. If I get a motion for items B, C, and D, classification and placement of preschool, home instruction, those three pieces? Check from Mr. Marizio. Those three are before us, any questions or comments? Being done, all in favor, posed, and that, those items. Business reports, acknowledgement, item E, a motion. Thorn, those are before us. Question. Being done, all in favor, posed, those items are carried. Declaration of marketable and non-marketable goods, motion, please. Check from Mr. Ludden, any question or comments? Being done, all in favor, posed, those items are carried. Have a date before us to accept for the organization. Pardon, sec from Mr. Marizio, any discussion on that date?
I'm all set with that date, but I had some concerns about other dates. You gave us some other dates, are we voting on? Okay.
Or no, yeah.
Yeah, so, because I have concern that it's either July or August about a date. I'll talk to you about it.
Adopt those at the organizational meeting?
Because there's three weeks difference between one, and there's no reason to have August. Okay. Apologize.
Okay, so we have the organizational meeting before us, any other questions? Being done, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. We have acknowledgement of a gift, we have both gifts in B and C. France? Well, I'm going to ask for motion, place those before us. Motion, Mr. Marizio, sec from Mr. Segru. So we have B and C before us, any comments? Being done, all in favor, posed, and those items are carried. E, please, a motion, please. Thorn, sec from Dr. Kramer, this is the recommendation to abolish and create a nurse position, any question or?
I'd, I'd like the administration to give us a list of, of the number of nurses again, because it keeps changing. I'd just like to know how many are at Allen Road, Bear Road, have a list of the number of nurses. Yeah, thank you, Dean.
But my understanding, when I look at this, we're abolishing a .5 FTE, but we're adding the other discussion. Posed, and that is carried. And E, item E, the abolishment of school monitor positions, motion, put that before us, motion from Dr. Kramer. Any comments, questions on that, Mr. Ludden?
Yeah, I just was wondering, you know, especially because I know that these are bus drivers, teachers, and things like that, who are, you know, doing us a huge favor. Before we vote on pulling out a part-time employment for them, is anyone able to confirm that they will still be able to get 40 hours a week and get a full-time paycheck, even though these positions are being removed? Right, as in, they will still get their entire full-time? Thank you.
Questions or comments? Done, all in favor, posed, and those are carried. Get the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, item F, please, a request to change the names of the extra classroom club accounts, a motion, place that before us, motion, Mr. Thorn, second from Dr. Kramer. Any question there?
Already explained mine. I mean, I don't even know how they had an account for Student Senate. It's called Principal's Cabinet, and it's not dealing with government, it's dealing with having all these events and stuff, so. We're talking about money and accounts, so.
This change to CNS student government is a?
I don't know when the last time we had sad, because it's been positivity all year this year.
Comments or questions?
Seems to me, at least for the sad, to a CNS positivity project, that this is to make sure that the official name change reflects that the club has kind of done a rebrand and all of that, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Same with the first one. Other questions? Being done, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Be the acknowledgement of the appointment of an impartial hearing officer pursuant to Part 200 regulations, Dr. Question. Being done, all in favor, posed, and that item is carried. And H, a request for approval of the universal pre-K contracts, a motion. Marizio, second from Dr. Kramer, any question? They're still on there, North Minsters still on there for this year, going into next year, and they have indicated. Other discussion? Part of that was Friday letter, yeah. Done, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And request to approve the annual OCMBOSI's equivalent of attendance, employment preparation, education, adult sponsorship agreement, authorized signatures, and annual cooperative bidding resolution notification agreements. That's a mouthful, that's item I. Motion, place that before us, motion, Mr. Thorn, sec from Mr. Segru. Any questions? Being done, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Instructional personnel report, A. Motion, place that before us. Kramer, sec from Mr. Herman. Okay, that is before us, questions? Yes, sir.
Um, I just would like to echo the comments that Mr. Crabtree made earlier, that I would like to be able to get clarification at some point from the administration, that this was in fact only due to a declining enrollment and not anything that was in the budget, because the understanding that I had when we were voting on the budget was that no teachers would be laid off. So as long as I can get confirmation on that, I would be happy to understand that unfortunately, these things happen, I understand.
My other, my other thing, and I didn't bring it up before, Thomas had some really good ideas of how to increase our French enrollment. Obviously, somebody don't listen to them, because this is happening. You know, when we are looking for kids to take courses, we need to do some more, a little more publicity, and it's sad, because we give this biliteracy award now through BOSI's that is phenomenal for kids, and now we're dropping a French section. Doesn't make sense to me, but.
Done, all in favor, posed, instructional. Excepted, B, support staff personnel, motion, put that. Thorn, second from Mr. Comments, questions? All in favor, posed, and that item is carried. Administrative personnel report, C, a motion, place that before us. Marizio, sec from Mr. Thorn. Question. Being done, all in favor, posed, that is carried, and I just want to congratulate Hillary, who's here, ready to talk. Thank you and welcome. Time I'm going to make a motion and ask for a second, the motion's to enter executive session for the purpose of reviewing one negotiation item with no action to follow, two legal items with no action to follow, and two personnel items with no action to follow, if I can get a second. Dr. Kramer, any discussion or additions to that? Being done, all in favor, posed, and that is carried, and a motion for adjournment, please, Mr. Marizio. Or any discussion? Posed, we are adjourned at 6:38, thank you.